All right, welcome to this evening's work session. Our first order of business will be to conduct a roll call. Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
I'm present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
You hear me? I'm present.
Yes ma'am, we heard you. Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
I'm here, but the sound is going out. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
All right, Madam Clerk, our commissioners are present and accounted for. Our first, well, what we need to do now is if, looking at the preliminary items for next board meeting, does any commissioner wish to discuss any of the items on the preliminary agenda?
Yes, there was an item on the agenda that it just had a couple of titles on it, and I just wanted to see if you could pull those and at least give a little bit more clarity to it if possible.
I need to have a little more information as to which item you're speaking on.
All of the agenda items on the preliminary agenda had additional information. Several of the items only had a subject line, and so there was no additional information provided to those items. At what point did we receive that information?
Usually you'll get that updated information after the actual agenda meeting, which will be set on tomorrow.
Okay, so if that's the case, then there wouldn't be any additional information provided in this meeting.
No ma'am.
That's what I have a question on. For instance, Chrome Books, it says Chrome's Books, and then there are a couple of other items that just have titles, but okay.
Okay, well, maybe we need to add a little bit more or dress that up for the next work session meeting. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll modify that and try to put a little more information on it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, if there's no other items to be discussed, we'll start our work session discussion items, which first is streetlight program, and it will be presented by Mr. Matarco from Transportation and Development. You have the floor, sir.
Is this the one you get on your team?
No. That's the second one. We're good?
Yep.
All right, good evening, Board. This is a presentation on a proposed, what we're calling a capital rate on our streetlight Okay, just a quick overview of the current existing streetlight program. It was, as you can see on the screen, it was established actually back in 1979. Yeah, I think the actual first streetlights went into implementation in 1980. I listed the couple of resolutions that established the process. It's a community petition-based process that the citizens have to agree to a nominal tax on their property tax bill. It's additional line item to cover the cost of the streetlight. Essentially, it's 50% plus one on the petition process, and you get approved for streetlights in a defined, what they call, district. There's a couple nuances. If it's a small area, under 10 parcels in consideration, it would have to be 100% of the property owners would have to agree to the tax. Obviously, we bring it to the board commissioners who approve it, y'all are familiar with it, on numerous agendas where you approve the fee for a designated area. The main crux of the program is the fee that gets charged goes towards O&M, operations and maintenance. It does not pay the capital cost of the poles. It pays the ongoing maintenance, relamping, sometimes cleaning that Georgia Power or another energy provider provides. And obviously, it provides the power consumption, the energy costs, to light the streetlight. I put on note, the last comment at the bottom is, since 2007, all new subdivisions in the county are required to have streetlights. So that means usually the developer approve the streetlight petition as one owner before they subdivide the lots. So, those types of subdivisions came in, the residents came into those homes with streetlights in the community. A quick overview of how the rates are, there are two rate categories. There's an overhead power fee or an underground power fee, depending on what type of power service your subdivision has. The difference is in the cost, is this a nominal cost because we could face additional expenses with an underground power feed because it's a different type of pole. The overhead power, obviously, I put an example there, it's just a typical utility pole, it has wires and stuff on there. Georgia Power just puts what they call their "cobrehead" usually is the pole language of the light that gets attached. They usually do that for free if there's overhead powers. The underground power, obviously, there's a capital cost expense to put the pole, as you see in that picture, and the transformers and stuff in the ground. Again, if it's a new subdivision and they have underground power, which most of our subdivisions do, the capital costs are paid by the developer upfront. Our current rates, I put on there, those are the starting rates. It could go up a little bit depending if you're on a bigger lot. You could go up to a neighborhood of $50 a year depending on how much frontage you have. But most people in our program pay the base rate, which is $35 for overhead power and $38 for underground power. The issue we've ran through, through, I mean, my tenure with the county is actually the inability for residents to fund capital costs. As I said, the program is based on operation and maintenance is what the tax bill pays for. So if we have an older subdivision that has underground power and they want to expand their streetlight footprint, they, by our policies, have to pay the capital cost upfront. They don't pay us, they pay Georgia Power directly for that. What we found through the years is very few of their subdivisions are able to collect that money from the various property owners and pay the upfront costs. So, what we've done, this is kind of an idea that sparked our Georgia Power on a rate plan they came up for the county, and we kind of took it and ran with it on an idea of maybe we can offer this program to the citizens in a different way. A new pole cost, at least dealing with Georgia Power, is somewhere around $500. So, if you think about that, and we try to figure out what we could do with a capital cost, and we create another rate plan, right now, remember, you have an overhead rate plan and underground rate plan, we're kind of thinking maybe a $50 charge to go towards the capital expense. In essence, we're kind of amortizing the capital cost upfront, but instead of the subdivision and the parcel owners trying to pay all upfront in year one, really essentially year zero you can consider because they have to pay upfront, we're amortizing that rate over a couple of years. Then after the capital costs are paid off, then we will revert back to the regular nominal rate that they pay. I gave example at the bottom on the page there, a pretty simple example. This would not be everywhere because each location is kind of specific, especially if you're talking transformers or things like that nature. But if you consider our spacing of our streetlights are typically about a pole every five parcels. So if you have the $500 cost upfront, if we charge them the extra $50 for those five parcels, over two years, they've essentially got to pay it off. So, I quickly, the year one cost would be $50 in additional to the existing 38, so that's how you get the 88. And as you can see, year three, we revert back. So the concept is, kind of, the county is a bank in essence. One thing to remember, we're not talking about, oh, lighting up Clayton County in this fashion. Again, any new subdivisions that come in, they're addressing this upfront. And any subdivisions that have overhead power are existing right now, I mean, it's a rare case they run into additional costs other than Georgia Power putting the new lamp on a pole. So these are isolated locations where you have established subdivisions with the underground power, and they just, it's just a burden for them to try to self-collect that funding upfront. For instance, if you're talking 10 poles, I mean, that's $5,000 there real easily. And then you get into situations of one person wants to pay, three people want to pay, two people don't. So how do you do that? So this is a potential solution to help address that. If the cost is more than a two-year type of cycle, it might go three years. It could go four years depending on what the cost is. And like I said, that's a specific thing depending on what the request is for the subdivision and what's needed. The important thing is, this is all a petition process. So, right now, the petition is disclosed what your costs are on the petition. So they would sign, acknowledging, the property owner would sign acknowledging the cost. So we were structuring the petition that would be presented to the property owners that this is your rate for the next so many years, and then after that rate, it'll revert back to whatever the current charge rate is. I used, in the presentation, the existing costs. Now, there's fluctuations, it's not every year by any stretch of imagination, but as power goes up over years, at times, the board has done rate adjustments, a dollar here, a dollar there, to make sure that the program is self-funding itself. So if we go down three years from now and you tweak that $38 rate to $40, I still would want it structured to the capital cost, which the integrity of that $50 will still be there. But we've talked to the Tax Assessor's Office, Rodney McDaniel, about how they programmed the tax rates and this structure. He doesn't seem to have any type of impact or problem to his staffing. So, this is a proposal we thought brought merit to potentially advance some of these subdivisions that historically haven't been able to collect their funds and get the streetlights in the community that they desire.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Matarco?
Yes, sir.
Oh wow, okay, all right, one at a time. Let's start with Commissioner Gregory.
Okay. Jeff, I know you don't have any idea of how many of these old subdivisions we still have in the county that don't have streetlights, do you?
Not off the top of my head. I can tell you this, when we sat down and started brainstorming this, our streetlight coordinator, Ms. Blades, basically said, Jeff, we're probably only talking about a main dozen that keep on coming back every couple of years asking for this again. So again, it's not widespread, but I can't sit here and tell you it's only a dozen, obviously.
I say, I say, thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, Jeff, I have some of those isolated subdivisions, you know, the older subdivisions that are coming back from time to time. Now, I think I heard you say that if, with that cost of the 88 and, anyway, if you would go back to that screen, do we still have to pay, would that subdivision still have to pay the $38, or is that taken off until that full amount of the 500 per pole is finished off?
Okay, I probably did a poor job explaining this. On the tax bill, you have one line item, I think it's actually coded, "Streetlight Protection Fee." The idea is not to create another line item on your tax bill. It's to essentially code it as additional, as a new rate. So the $38 fee would be encompassed into the $88 fee. That's how we get 88 to 38 plus the proposed $50 fee. From a citizen's perspective, it's still one line item on the tax bill. From everyone's touching of this at the county level, it's just identification of a different rate plan. So it's pretty streamlined in the amount of burden, if you call it that, that the staff would have to implement this.
Okay. Hold on. So are you asking the commissioners if this is something we will be interested in, or if we do, is it undertaking the numbers? Will we have the numbers on? Just how would it work from now? Because I'm getting there, because I have some of those isolated subdivisions. So what is the next step, I guess, I'm asking?
Based upon feedback from y'all tonight, obviously, it would either require a resolution ordinance because it's dealing with the rates, and it's a mid-year type adjustment, so it wouldn't be something I would suggest you wait to the budget process to tackle. So that would be something with the county attorney's office drafting a resolution identifying this additional rate plan. Traditionally, in years past, if you change the rates mid-year, it is a resolution based to memorialize it. So the feedback I would need is, are you okay with a $50 fee? It could be less, it could be more. The idea is, whatever the capital cost is, I mean, simple math, no interest, I mean, until it gets paid off, it stays on there until it goes away. We're kind of, in our essence, fronting the money from the county's perspective. So if the $50 is the pleasure of the board, that's all we'd need to essentially turn this over to the county attorney's office to draft a resolution.
And just to be clear, this is a streetlight project where it's not replacing the old one?
Correct.
Yeah, so that would be another option, but this one here, and again, only those subdivisions that are making this request, and there would be a petition.
Yes, sir. It's all citizen-driven, requested.
So, just to be clear, not everybody's got to pay the extra $50.
No.
It's only those subdivisions who want additional lighting or lighting to pay the $50.
Correct.
And what I'm going to ask of you also is to make sure you email this to each commissioner so we can further digest it. Commissioner Hambrick, you have some additional questions?
Well, I was going to ask him, the subdivision would have to agree anyway, right? Is that what you were mentioning about the affidavits to be signed?
The individual parcel owners have to agree, not the subdivision.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
The property owners.
Commissioner Davis, wait a minute.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, is it Commissioner Davis?
No, go ahead, Commissioner Warner. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. I understand you're stating that the next steps would be for a resolution from the attorney. However, I believe you've already alluded to the fact that there is some missing information here in order for us to really analyze and understand the impact of this implementation of the fee. The fee does seem to be a very small fee, but at the end of the day, I think that we would need to know how many subdivisions would possibly be impacted, even if they're just making a request for this. I believe we need that piece of the puzzle first. And then the other question, what question I have is, I'm not understanding what's going to hold a resident to paying this fee if it's not on the property tax, because let's say, I like to put this light in because I want to sell my house, and I'm paying the fee for the first year. Well, what is the obligation for the new homeowner to come in and continue the additional fee?
The fee is on the tax bill, so the next year's bill will be on the bill for the new owner.
Okay, so I missed that point, because I thought, I guess I'm out and lost the translation. I thought you said you didn't want to increase the tax bill, but I got it. But I think we have the information in regards to how many subdivisions would be impacted.
That would-
Did y'all not do that research before, bring this before us?
Honestly, since this is a citizen-driven petition process, that information was not something we thought was pertinent at this time. If that's something desired, we can go through the steps to try to figure that out, all the potential areas.
But like you said, at the end of the day, the subdivision or the individual homeowner would make their request, go through the petition, and then, if they have enough, this program would be enacted.
Right, it doesn't change the streetlight petition process. That stays the same. It just offers additional rate for the ones that-
Actually, knee poles.
Knee poles, yes. So it was thought of as a relatively simple add, simple math, simple add on opportunity. The most complex part of it is figuring out what the capital costs are upfront and structuring the petition so it's acknowledged when the resident goes to sign what they're looking at and how many years they're looking at that additional fee for.
Gotcha.
And I say part of our justification is because we had homeowners to come up with this problem, so it's not that we got to know how many in the county that needs that before we vote on it. We're having this issue right now.
I agree, I agree with that. That may add district two, so count district two in, gee.
We haven't got that far yet, Commish, but we working on it. Commissioner Davis, you have some?
What about those homes that are not in subdivisions? That are located on just streets?
It gets a little bit more problematic. The program is set up to be a residential program, and it has to be self-funding. So when you get into areas that aren't dense subdivisions, it gets to a simple math, how many parcels can you string together to get the coverage you need for the number of poles you might desire? We work with the property owners at that point, trying to figure out how many they need. Again, the 50 plus one is kind of a powerful thing in that situation. But each location is very unique depending on how many homes you have.
Yeah, and I'm thinking more along the lines of, you know, like on Noah's Ark, which is extremely dark, Walt Stephen, Jodico, and some of those side streets, that's what I'm thinking about.
Those are difficult because the homes are within the subdivisions. That road is more of a collector road where the very few homes fronting the subdivision. We try to, when we structure the districts, we try to address the immediate frontage of a subdivision, the entryway, with the subdivision lights, with the money generated in the program from the fees for that subdivision. But going down a whole corridor, it's very difficult. The program is not structured to be easily implemented in that way.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so what I'm hearing from the board is they like this proposal, and I think we'll direct Mr. Reed to start drafting up something for our further consideration. Thank you, Mr. Matarco, for the streetlight program, and we will go next to the interstate program.
Well, before you do that, I would like to give a special thanks to Mr. Matarco and his staff for coming to this, because, like I say, I'm inundated with requests and questions from time to time on this. So I appreciate the research and all the work that's been put in this, so thank you very much, and please express that to your staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to the next. Interstate.
I wouldn't hold her until they have questions. Okay, streetlights of a different kind. Interstate lights and state route lighting. This is not anything governed by the previous streetlight program that we have, which is more residential-based. All right, we are concentrating on the northern portion of the county. The interstate's on I-75, 285, in the Mountain View area. Currently, there are three agreements we have with Georgia DOT concerning interstate or interstate route lighting in those areas. The first three on your screen are the ones in question. The dates, like the first one there, March 2002, was when the agreement was agreed upon between the county and Georgia DOT. The last one there is a proposal that's kind of overlapping this area that is currently on your proposed agenda for next business meeting for consideration. Georgia DOT permits the lights, and in most situations, will fund the capital installation. They, by policy, do not operate, maintain, or pay the energy costs for the lights. They put theirs solely on the local jurisdictions. So the agreements are actually pretty simple, five, six pages. They're pretty much to the point, pretty straightforward. We do this, and the county does this. And at any point, we choose not to have the lights anymore, and we take them down, and we de-energize them, we're subject to repaying all the capital costs that they put forth to begin with. So, this is a map of the area in question. There's four color codes of the area, representing really the four agreements. You've got the kind of pinkish area, which includes the old park and ride lot, when that was energized and used back in the early 2000s. And they call that the centerline area of I-75. You have the green, that is the interchange at 285. You have the orange area, which is the Mountain View, the great separation project that's still going on under construction up there, dealing with a couple state routes in our CW Grant and Conley Road area. Then you have the blue area that Georgia DOT has under construction right now as you go northbound on I-75, a ramp project. The issues are the maintenance associated with these systems. The county doesn't have the capabilities to maintain theirs. We've never had the capabilities to maintain theirs. When these agreements were signed, the earlier ones, pre-my time as director, they were agreed upon. We can get into reasons and thoughts about why they were, but they are and we're responsible for them. But we don't have the expertise, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the equipment to address these things in an interstate or really a state route setting. The current systems, these are the current ones on the interstate. The CW Grant one is just been installed, so the current lighting systems on the interstate, they're essentially non-functional at this point. Over the years, they've been vandalized. Copper thieves actually have stolen copper down the middle of I-75 somehow, stripped the wire out of the conduit. Some of the pole fixtures are missing, and they need a complete capital overhaul to get them up and running. And some of the situation, even though Georgia DOT installed the systems upfront, after a couple of years of research, we have been unable to locate detailed construction plans that essentially tell you where the wiring runs out there on the interstate. So in order to move this program forward and honor our commitments, we need some sort of capital maintenance and improvement agreements. So, we engaged Georgia Power. Obviously, they're the majority provider of all our residential lights in the county. They do this for other jurisdictions. They actually repaired the section on I-75 a couple of years ago, north of the section in our county, so they're familiar with the area. And they're the ones that we would be paying the energy costs, and should have been paying the energy costs since it started. So it just seems a natural fit to go towards them. So we engaged them with a discussion of kind of three topics for each of those four agreement areas. Obviously, the capital improvements that are needed for the systems that are in non-functioning mode. Ongoing maintenance agreements to maintain these lights. Then some of these lights will qualify for some of their Public Service Commission tariff rates, and some of them might be a special rate plan. So there would have to be a memorialization of how we fund the energy rates for these different areas. So there will have to be a memorialization of how we fund the energy rates for these different areas. Just to give you a quick detail on each of these, a snapshot. This purple area is actually the area that you'll see in a couple of slides that we're proposing to be the first, out of the box, the first area to go towards. We've identified the agreement date, obviously, up top, how many lights, the estimated repair costs, the estimated maintenance costs ongoing, and we try to give you an idea of what the estimated power consumption cost would be. Now, we have the park-and-ride lot identified on here, because that's in the agreement with Georgia DOT, but we would not be proceeding with the park-and-ride lot, just because it's non-functional as a park-and-ride. Obviously, y'all are privy to that information. So we're talking really the bottom of that block up top, the information there about the centerline area. As you can see, the estimated capital replacement cost right now is about $350,000. And that's for Georgia Power to turnkey it, to go in there and establish the service points, address all the maintenance needs that's needed, replace poles, replace wire, whatever it takes. And that's based off their preliminary assessment of the area. Granted, there are a lot of unknowns out there, and a lot of assumptions that went into the cost. So they feel confident that they gave us that number upfront, but once they get into construction, obviously, things happen, and there might be additional costs that we might have to expect on that. But that's what we're looking at for the upfront commitment on that project. This is the second one. This is the interchange project. And I put this in there because we're trying to show you the whole area. What I don't want to have happen is feel like we're piecemealing the problem up there in successive meetings over several months on the area, so we're giving you the whole picture. This project here is actually one you're seeing on the layer slide. We're putting it in here for reference, but we're not recommending to proceed with it right now, mainly because we want to see Georgia Power fix the first section, which is north of here. And half of this project overlaps the currently under construction Georgia DOT project. So this would be the kind of the last area we would want to have addressed. But as you can see in there, a preliminary really rough estimate is just under $200,000 to get that up and running. Now, in this area, you're mainly talking about what they call their high-mass lighting, the really, really, really tall poles on the interstate that light up the whole area. The CW Grant, Charles Grant Parkway, State Route 3, Conley Road area. Now, that was just constructed under the Road Improvement Project by Georgia DOT. We had signed the agreement several years ago. If they build it, we will fund the maintenance and the ongoing energy costs. Currently, all that's being paid for by the contractor. Once the project's complete, it's going to revert to us. So we need to, at some point, sign a maintenance agreement, obviously with Georgia Power, to maintain this when it becomes our responsibility and when the energy costs get transferred to us. The last section is the, this is the one we don't have our agreement with Georgia DOT on. This is the one that Georgia DOT's proposed for us for a couple of years. It's under construction now. Until we brought forward the repair that was needed on the capital overhaul of the other two systems, we didn't want to address this one with Georgia DOT. But now's the time, in the scope of the whole area up there, to either move forward with this or tell Georgia DOT we decline. But this is another stretch of the interstate. Obviously, it's the ramp area. It's not the centerline of I-75. It's only where they're constructing the ramps from Forest Parkway up to the interchange, and includes a little bit of the ramp area. As I mentioned earlier, when we were showing the interchange, the green, it overlaps. So this one kind of changes some of the green needs. That's the main reason why we're saying hold off on the green area for now. So what's the next steps? What do we need to do? The first thing is to address, are we interested in the lights on the Georgia DOT currently under construction project? Like I said at the start, we've put that as a placeholder on your next business meeting agenda for consideration. So that's the first thing. That's the near thing. The next thing is, and we can take these kind of in groups, or we can take them all together, is to authorize Georgia Power agreements. Really, to get started on the capital repairs needed on the I-75 corridor area and to sign the maintenance and the energy costs associated with that and the other areas that are under construction. Then the number three at the bottom of the page is the green area, the interchange. And that would be at a later date. In all fairness to Georgia Power, I would like them to realize their costs on the northern centerline section, and it hopefully would actually go down in cost once they see the overlap of the ramp project that Georgia DOT is currently constructing. So I think we will get a more accurate number at a later date, if we so desire to go forward with that. So at this point, I would say hold off on that until the appropriate time comes up. In conversations with Georgia Power, just to give you a timeframe, now, given everything with COVID right now, their guesstimate is an approximate six months from execution of the agreements to get moving on the repair costs, the actions needed on the I-75 centerline. They feel pretty confident they can start getting some of those lights turned on. Of course, if they have to buy a new pole or something, there's going to be some supply time. But we asked them for a timeframe of what we're looking at. Is this a two-year, five-year project? By no means. They're ready to move on, and that's why they gave us the approximate six-month timeframe. So that's a, I know it's a lot of information. This wasn't created overnight, obviously. We do have these signed agreements with Georgia DOT, and to uphold our part of the agreement, we need to start working on how we're going to repair and get these in good working orders, and then obviously set forward something that wasn't set forward 10, 15 years ago to maintain these lights appropriately.
I know you broke down each section of roadways separately, but what I didn't see, and I'm visual, so I really need to see it, is the aggregate of the total cost when it comes to the maintenance costs of starting some of those projects. So what figure, what dollar figure are we roughly talking about? Just for the maintenance and repair costs?
Okay. If you... Bear with me one minute. The first one, you're talking $2,000 a month. The second one, if we want to go to, is roughly $1,500 a month. We try to put these together on similar timeframes. $2,500, so that's about $5,000 there total. And then this one's the costly one, about $7,500 a month there. So $12,000 a month-ish, $150,000-ish, simple, quick math.
But that's only for the repair costs?
That's the maintenance cost. That's the ongoing routine maintenance. Now, your capital cost to get up and going, $350,000 in the first section, I would think between that one and the interchange, you're a rough preliminary cost, you're probably looking at about $600,000. Now, the other two sections, there's no capital cost upfront, because those are new installations. It's just ongoing maintenance from there on out. Some of the maintenance stuff, depending on what type of light it is, it's a monthly maintenance plan. Some of them are every six months. And Georgia Power handles everything, or they have the capabilities to handle everything on a routine maintenance. Now, God forbid, there's an accident out there, and someone runs into one of these poles and knocks down a pole. The maintenance cost does not cover that. That would be something Georgia Power would be working with us. They can do the repair, but we would be looking at having to fund that individually.
And the picture you have on the screen currently right now is under construction.
That's under construction.
So we wouldn't have to worry about that part until they finish the project.
It would probably be when they finish their construction. It's probably a good 18 months out, at least. Again, we wanted, this is something COO Stanford and I sat down, pre-COVID, actually, and talked about how we wanted to present this. And we didn't want to bring one, and bring another, and bring another one, where you get the piecemeal. We wanted to show you the whole system upfront.
Yeah, and we got to appropriate funding if we want to go down that road.
As far as the maintenance, what's all contained within that maintenance? And like you said, we cannot do any of the maintenance. It would be all Georgia Power, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, on the interstate, and even on the state route, but it really gets complex on the interstate, you have to close some lanes. So that's, I mean, just going on I-75 in the middle of the night is a feat to do the proper lane closures. You would have to get permits from Georgia DOT, obviously, to do that, too. You would have to have appropriate bucket trucks. You would have to have appropriate expertise in electronics and the wiring that is associated with it. Now, the easy stuff is cleaning the lenses, or if something's out and they have a breaker or something like that. Hopefully, that's what majority of them are, but they could get complex at times.
And would that would be on the state routes as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have something.
Commissioner Hammer.
It may be farfetched, I don't know, but since so many different groups, well, not so many, but specifically speaking of the ARC and Areatropolis, I'm just wondering if at some point, and maybe not to get an immediate start, is there some source of grant or something that could help the county with this? I know we have all these different programs, well, as far as Areatropolis is concerned, I know. As far as trash pickup and some other things that they've been talking with the commissioners about. I wonder, this is something that they would be interested in, since they are trying to increase the beautification of the areas close to the airport. And it seems like everything we're talking about tonight, as far as the lights are concerned, are things that are surrounding the airport? If money are available from either one of those groups, either one of those organizations, have there been any talks about that with either ARC funding or Areatropolis?
I don't know if Mr. Matarco has spoken in that area, but the meetings that I sit in with both entities, there has not been any discussion about streetlight or interstate lighting. To be quite honest with you, especially with Areatropolis, that would put a major dent in their budget. Of course, this would even, you know, put an increase in our budget that we would have to budget for in the long run. Mr. Stanford. You have some?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Board. Commissioner Hammer, to answer your question, yeah, a lot of the grant funds with ARC and Areatropolis have talked more about aesthetics and cosmetic issues. So we talk more about weight finding, we talk more about beautification and median beautification. But Mr. Matarco's presentation is dealing more with the maintenance and upkeep. So a lot of the grant dollars traditionally hadn't gone towards that. But once we get the lighting in, it would make sense that we do a lot of the beautification projects that have come from Areatropolis as well as ARC. So we are looking to bring grant funds in from that area, but not necessarily for the maintenance and upkeep.
Correct.
Uh, this is Velasia.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I have one of the...
Oh, hold on a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Hammer. Commissioner Warner, just hold on a second.
I'll be finished, Commissioner Warner. But, and I don't know if anybody else saw this, but, and I think it's been within the last month, I read something regarding, and I think it may have been some kind of collaboration with Henry County and Georgia Power. I'm not sure. But it's some special kind of lighting they have, they will have if they don't have it already, coming up I-75. And they specifically said it stops at Clayton County. Is anybody else familiar with that?
You've made that, no?
That's right.
Nobody here is familiar, Commissioner?
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Warner?
Actually, I must tell you that I have heard of such. And in fact, Henry County has been very progressive in making sure that they meet with, as you just alluded to, Commissioner, with those state agencies. It may not be the agencies that you called out. However, the one thing that we do know for certain is that we can definitely benefit from collaborating with other efforts. The first thing is, we do know that the state is working on and planning a truck-only highway. And then on top of that, DOT, Georgia DOT, is all about looking at infrastructure in terms of safety. And so this will fall into that category as well. So I think that there is an opportunity for us to explore a little bit more. The other thing that I have also learned, or similar to what was spoke about with Henry County, is that other jurisdictions are tapping into resources that are currently available or even coming up with innovative resources to offset some of the costs. The business improvement districts and the CID's have been definitely helpful because it's all about, as you stated, attracting folks to the area. So this presentation is so timely, and it's so awesome. But I really, for me, I'm just always looking for us to dig a little deeper. I think the research is great, but there's always an opportunity to connect a little bit more and dig a little bit deeper and explore other options.
All right, any other questions, statements?
I just have one question, just because I have no clue. Do these type of lamps come in solar? Any type of solar?
Some, some of the industry is getting there with LEDs coming out. It's more of your parking lot focus type. I don't, I have never heard of something with the power needed for like these interstate, the high-mass lighting. We can ask Georgia Power about that, but I've never seen anything associated with that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Matarco?
I would like to hear Georgia Power directly at some point, if we do know that. Thank you for the presentation, but I would really love to hear about innovative things, not just in the state of Georgia, but other ways, other areas, too. But this is a great conversation and a great start.
Ms. King is online. If, Ms. King, are you still online?
Ms. King?
Hello?
Hey, how are you doing, Ms. King?
I'm good. How are you? Yes, sir, I'm online. And I also have three other employees online joining me, Scotty Burke, Anthony Wilk, and Jean Edwards.
Okay, well, welcome all. I think Commissioner Warner had some questions that she would like to ask of Georgia Power.
Well, I think what I was hearing is just really echoing some of the questions that we've heard, which one is, are there solar options maybe that we've not implemented in the state of Georgia that may possibly be available so that we could use any type of innovation to be able to accomplish this goal?
Are you aware of that, any solar lighting to that effect, Ms. King?
Scotty, Jean, can I get you to chime in on that, please?
Hi, this is Jean Edwards. At this time, I am not aware of any such program. As Jeff alluded to early in the conversation, these are lights that were installed by the George Department of Transportation many, many years ago. And the agreements were signed by the county to provide energy and maintenance for these existing lighting systems. So I think just looking at getting them up and running will be the number-one charge. Yes, you know, the LED is the buzzword of the future, and it's coming quick. So these lights here, you know, will not last very long. It will be a good idea to start budgeting to replace these lights with LED.
Gotcha. Ms. King, let me ask. Commissioner Warner alluded to the fact that there's some kind of a program, or you're working with Henry County on something on their interstate that stops at the county line or will stop at the county line. Are you familiar with that program?
I'm not exactly hearing all of what you're saying. Can you give me the last part of that? You said something about probably in Henry County?
Yeah.
How are they accomplishing this, bringing lights into the area?
How are they accomplishing that?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me, can you hear me, Ms. King? Okay.
The George Department of Transportation just installed a high-mass lighting system at Jodico Road. lighting system at Jodico Road and I-75 South. Uh, the next two interchanges, uh, Exit 218 and 220, uh, 220 and 222, Georgia Power maintains those lighting systems for Henry County. Uh, here again, these are all customer-owned systems, which the customer is responsible for the energy and maintenance.
So in this instance, Henry County is the customer? Hello?
Jean? Yes?
Is Henry County the customer in this instance?
That's correct.
So they are paying for the lighting? Uh, does it?
Yeah.
And you said it goes from what point to what point? And does it, it doesn't come to the Clayton County line, correct?
That is correct. Um, it's a little further south, um, you know, all in Henry County. Um, you know, you've got, uh, Stockbridge, uh, part of that, and then you come on up north there to, uh, Marrow. Uh, we just, uh, repaired the lighting at I-75 and Highway 54 for the city of Marrow. And they have, I think it's 347 lights that they're responsible for.
Okay, I got you. So, um, basically, it's the same program that Mr. Matarco just outlined for us?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, what I'm gonna have a question on, just the chairman, is then the next thing is to find out what's the funding source, um, for it. Because even though Henry County may be the, uh, you know, the, the client or whatever, the bottom line is where is the funding coming from? So that goes back to what I mentioned to before, there's opportunities to investigate a little deeper. But again, this is a, definitely a great start. I do want to bring up the fact that you talked about, um, GDOT installed those lights. Uh, one of the things that keeps coming up in conversation, uh, even in a lot of meetings that I, I end, is the fact that, um, in some instances, GDOT is making a level of investment as an economic development level of investment. And I've alluded to this in several meetings. So, um, I'm just really interested in us, um, continuing this conversation.
Any other questions? All right, well.
Uh, yes, I do, this is Hammer, I, I, yes, I have a question. So what do we go from here with this presentation? Since everything's in place, an agreement was made years ago with Clayton County. So do we take up, um, where, uh, this previous administration's left off? Or, or do we just continue to leave it hanging? What do we do?
Well, we would have to draft, uh, new agreements, articles of agreement to with, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reed.
If, if I'm sorry, correct?
Yes.
The agreements for Georgia DRT still stand. So there's no new agreements needed.
Gotcha.
The, the agreements needed are with Georgia Power. Um, now, of course, the first number one on that one screen I had is the new agreement for the currently under construction ramp work. So that's the first one, like, is on the agenda right now for next, next week. Um, but then it's to get, Georgia Power's given us a couple of proposals on the maintenance and the, the capital improvements. Um, of course, we could get with the county attorney and have him draft the appropriate documents that are needed to memorialize theirs into a, into a solid agreement and contract going forward with Georgia Power. Um, I don't, I doubt he'll have theirs for next week, but we can work on theirs for one of the upcoming business meetings.
Well, of course, we got to have those agreements, but also we got to have a funding source because it would take a budget amendment to make sure, to, to be able to pay for it. Uh, if, especially if we want it done before, uh, July 1 of, of 2021. So we would need to find, talk with the CFO and talk about the funding source and where we're going to get the money and how we're going to use it. Uh, Commissioner Hammer, did you say something?
I'm sorry?
Oh, okay.
Yes, I want us to keep in mind that we're talking about lighting of existing lights that are already outdated as well. So while we're going through this exercise, um, and talking about bringing the agreements, the reason I kept talking, mentioning earlier about the level of investment that's made towards, um, the lighting and tran, through GDOT for transportation, um, for economic development purposes, is because we need to be planning not just for January 1. We need to be planning light years ahead, as I believe that the gentleman, I, I forgive me for not remembering your name, but just stated earlier. Um, so we put these agreements in place based upon our current costs, but we've got to remember that we're doing something that is already outdated, that we need to be moving into the direction of installing, uh, the LED light. And then the other thing is, keep in mind, again, the state is talking about a, uh, you know, these truck-only routes. And we know that with these plans and transportation plans, I just think that we need to make sure everybody is at the table. Um, and as the other commissioners have stated, that we're just, you know, we know it's on the turn before we move forward. I want us to get moving forward, but I, I believe that we would, we would shoot ourselves in the foot if we don't make sure that we're planning not just for January, but for years ahead.
Well, that's agreed. As with anything, I would hope that if we're going to do something, we're going to do it proper and in order. Uh, so your point is taken. Commissioner Hammer, did, were you, did you have something to say?
Uh, no, I was finished, but.
Okay.
Add to, um, mentioning a little bit of what, uh, Commissioner Warner was saying. I don't think that our T and D or, uh, the state, or Georgia Power, would put in oval outdated lights. I would think that whatever we decide to do on that, that, uh, everything will be upgraded. Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Obviously, the new.
As far as the LED lighting, the LED lighting and all that, I don't believe anybody is putting in old lights anymore. I don't believe in my house anymore.
Well, I thought it was just stated that he said we need to prepare to get those updated soon. So it's, I, I may, maybe there's a, a communication gap. Can Georgia Power come clarify that again?
Hold on a second, uh, Mr. Matarco, you were saying something?
The, the, the new construction that Georgia DRT is doing and the stuff they just completed in the Mountain View area would have been their state-of-the-art, um, meeting all their current specifications and standards. I don't believe they were LEDs, but I would have to check on that. The repair work, I'm sure Georgia Power can shed a little bit more light on this, but they're dealing with some of the existing infrastructure that, I mean, is dated, 15, 20 years old out there potentially. So, um, putting a, a new, it, it's not as simple as putting a new LED light bulb in your old fixture. There's a little bit more involved into that. So, um, I'm sure they're keeping in mind, um, putting in stuff up there that they can maintain moving forward, which would be newer products, um, reasonable stuff that they can fit into the old housings and, and infrastructure that's out there.
Well, let me ask you this question. With that in mind, would a, would this price in here include the, if there's an LED converter that's needed inside of that, inside of that housing? Would that be included in this or no?
I, I don't believe so. I, the, the intent was get them up and running.
Gotcha.
Um, get that going. And, and as, uh, Mr. Edwards alluded to, it might be prudent, long-term, to plan for, do you want to upgrade them? And, and also, um, I mean, you, you heard him say, they just did some work for the 5, for City of Marrow around 54. I mean, there's other areas of the interstate, too, that aren't lit. So if the county wants to invest something else, I mean, it's always the thing, do you want to put new out there in another area? Or do you want to retrofit the existing thing? I mean, if you start talking about long-term, that's obviously where our discussion would go.
So we might want to get it, uh, ascertain the cost for conversion of each box, perhaps?
I, it's still a future thing.
Yeah.
It's still out there. But yes, that's definitely something we can, we can have discussions with.
How long do these existing lights last, anyway?
I, I'll have to pivot to Georgia Power on that one.
Ms. King, or you, or your team can answer that question, the life, lifespan of the existing lights?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you. What was the question, Commissioner Davis?
What, what is the lifespan of an existing light that's put in those housings?
Jean, can you respond to that, please?
Sure. Well, the, the high-pressure sodium lights are still available right now. Um, however, you know, parts and material are getting more expensive, you know, all the time. Uh, the marketplace is driving LED. Um, and I heard somebody mention about, uh, the city of Marrow. Yes, the city of Marrow wanted to get the existing lighting system back up and running so that they meet the requirements from the George Department of Transportation. However, they do see down the road that they're going to be changing these lights out to LED. So they are going to start budgeting, you know, for that capital improvement.
Well, my, my, my rationale behind asking the question is because it was my understanding that these sodium lights are going to be discontinued somewhere in the future, anyway. Um, and everything is going to be converted, kind of converted over or moving in that direction. So if we're going to do that, would it be plausible and feasible to begin to look at those costs associated with it now? And if a light is going to last, I'll just say, three years, five years, do we begin to project, uh, or budget our cost for that coming in the future?
Anybody?
No, that's just, that was just my purpose for asking the question. Yeah, that was just my purpose for asking the question, to begin to go back around.
I'll be more than happy to discuss with Georgia Power. If it's something we can fit in this initiative, um, I'm sure we can go that route.
Well, even to, uh, Commissioner Warner's point, we should look at all options with, with growth and the best that, that, that's out there, I guess, uh, that comes at a cost. So we need to know what we're looking at or a rough estimate at, at best guess, so. Any other questions?
Can I quickly throw this out? Have we pulled this back from the accident, um, that was taking place on that highway in Clayton? Um, have we pulled that information to have that available as we're going through this exercise?
What would the, what would the purpose of pulling the accident total when we're in a grants that we want, we want to have the, the lights?
The first, something is, a perfect example is dealing with, as you talked about Marrow and what they've done, they've done a great job. But there are some, um, some, um, changes that were made to the road because of safety. And once again, this has come directly from our, um, our Commissioner O GDOT, that there are times that, um, possibly the argument can be made based upon safety for them to step in and help with some of the capital improvement costs. So we have these codes that are already in, that we've already confirmed that are older, and we've already confirmed that they will be upgraded to some degree to get them back on. However, it was one also stated that we would have to plan for the future to upgrade them even more to today's standards with I E L E D lighting and so forth. So if we're able to possibly pull that data, which I could tell you from what I've seen so far, I got a running accident all the time. If we could be able to see that it's a safety concern, it gives us an opportunity to bring that information to the table for a possible, um, not argument, but conversation piece, to be able to, um, engage those other entities to come on board and help make this happen for Clayton County. And it's just, it's just an idea, it ain't proven, uh, other than Terry Boulevard. Terry Boulevard had changes made to it based upon data. And Mr. Matarco was in that meeting. And the team from GDOT specifically said they were making changes because of the data that Clayton sent to them. All I'm saying, if it worked once, let's try it again.
Due, duly noted, Commissioner. Any other questions or statements? Again, thank you for your presentation. Again, please make sure each commissioner has this, uh, presentation so we can further digest and have any other further questions. Ms. King, if you would, thank you and your team for being online as well. And please, as you always have, and I appreciate all your efforts and all that you do in cooperation with Clayton County, that if we, any of the commissioners should have any additional questions for you, to make yourself or somebody available, you know, as it relates to the, uh, lighting project. Thanks again, Mr. Matarco.
Mr. King?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Mr. J, I want to, if, if, um, if Mrs. King is still on the line, are you on the line, Mrs. King?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Hammer.
Okay, I, look, I just want to say.
You're muted. You muted yourself, Commissioner Hammer.
Hello?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
I, I didn't hear that, Jean.
You, you, you are muted. Go ahead and, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm muted? Oh, okay.
Yeah, you were muted, go ahead and say it again.
Thanking Mrs. King and her staff, Georgia Power, for, uh, helping out, uh, what was that, two weeks ago, with the power outage and all, and, and responding, I mean, almost immediately. I really appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, and, uh, we appreciate your support and your patience as we put forth all efforts to safely restore the power. Chairman Turner, I appreciate your support, uh, continuously. I would like to share with you all, accepting an opportunity to lead our Savannah team. I've shared that with the chairman, and I'll be transitioning, uh, on the 20th of November. But you still have my number, so if there's anything that I can do for you, please feel free to reach out at any time. I will always consider myself a part of Clayton County, and I, I look forward to staying, staying in contact with each and every one of you.
Well, let me just say, you would definitely be missed. We appreciate your, your quick responses whenever we reached out to you. Uh, and you have definitely been a vital part of our community, ingrained in our community. And you would definitely, I can't say it enough, will be missed. And like I said to you one time before, don't get amnesia when we come down in droves to Savannah, and we're going to look you up just so we can say hi, okay?
Yes, sir, I look forward to the opportunity to continue to engage with you all, and thank you for being a model of community. I will take some of the ideas and best practices, um, everywhere I go.
Well, thank you, ma'am. All right, if there's not, no other business for the Board, we stand adjourned. Everybody have a great evening.